Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, December 27, 2022. The time is 5:35 PM. Thank you for those who braved the weather to come and sit in at the city council meeting, and those of you who are listening at home. We have a full agenda this evening with a special presentation at the end of the council meeting. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Barabu?
Present.
Friedleeb?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
Yandich?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Biondich?
Here.
Cuffey?
President. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to come and address the council for any matter they deem prudent. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before the council today? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of 5.1A, December 13, 2022, regular meeting; 5.1B, December 13, 2022, truth and taxation meeting; and item 5.1C, the December 15, 2022, special council meeting. Item 5.2 is the adoption of finance resolution number 22-025, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is the approval of pay estimate number eight to Lindsay Enterprises Incorporated for the police garage repair in the amount of $16,910. Item 5.4 is approve the 2023 taxi license for Ralph Ainsworth doing business as C and M Taxi. Item 5.5, approve the 2023 tobacco license for DG Retail LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store Number 13970. Item 5.6 is approve the 2023 on-sale liquor license for the Northern Divide Incorporated, doing business as Northern Divide Bar and Eatery. Item 5.7, approve the 2023 on-sale wine and strong beer license for the Sugar Shack, doing business as The Sugar Shack. And finally, item 5.8 is approve the 2023 second-hand good license for William Speltz, doing business as Twice As Nice. These are the consent agenda items on the agenda this evening, looking for council approval.
Move the consent agenda.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve their consent agenda and supported over here by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear for the council this evening. Again, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak. Seeing none, move to item number seven, which is unfinished business. Item 7.1, the property located at 410 Fifth Street South. Are we still on track for that same court date, Brian Lindsey, our city attorney?
We are, Mayor. They haven't moved it up, but they haven't moved it back, so.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding property at 410 Fifth Street South? Okay, move to item number 7.2, which is clinic lease. We're continuing to meet with Essentia on this as well? Is that correct, Britt? Okay, any questions or comments about that as this moves down the pike? Seeing none, move to item 7.3, the rental code ordinance. We're still waiting for some final draft from planning and zoning, and then it'll come to us for review and adoption. Any questions or comments about that? Counselor Biondich?
When that does come forward from planning and zoning, it has, is it three readings that it has, or do we just pass it? Two?
Should be two readings.
So I know when we had our meetings a while ago with the public, I think, was it decided at that time that that's when they could have public input? Was that the readings? Or if they had any, anything else to say about it? Or is it a final document?
If I may?
Please, Brian?
Counselor, once the, once an ordinance is introduced and is going through its readings, we're not, we're not permitted to change the text from one reading to the next. So any changes should come ahead of introduction and first reading.
And that, we expect that in January for the first reading?
It's coming back to the council to determine when you want to put it back on the first reading. So we'll have more information, more time to get more input if we'd like. What they're working on right now is the fee schedule that they want to associate with it, and they'll come back with that very soon here.
Okay, so when it comes to us, the first and second reading, there is no more public input?
Once the council puts it on the agenda for the first reading, that means we're done reviewing it and we're ready for the official process then to begin. Once you get a copy of Committee of the Whole, if you determine that you're not ready for it to go to first reading, then we just keep revising until we're ready to go to first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. If I may ask real quickly, it is not related to the rental code ordinance, but it's part of the process that's being reviewed by our planning and zoning. And are they, I've been getting a number of calls regarding the CBD sale of edibles in wondering where that, when that's coming from other cities that have already passed it, went forward. And I've been getting a number of calls about that, and I just want to assure the general public, those people who have been calling me and are listening at home, and those business owners that are looking for some action, we are working on it. Is that correct, Britt? Thank you very much. Counselor Barabu?
Well, before we get to that subject, Maya, there is still process with planning and zoning. If anybody wants to complain about that ordinance, they can still go there. It hasn't been finalized to the council yet, so they can bring up their concerns and stuff at planning and zoning, which is every first Monday of the month, if I remember right, at, what is it, 4:30 in the afternoon or 5, 4:30? So they still have options there before it gets here.
Counselor Biondich?
And thank you for pointing that out. I know it was asked at one of our previous meetings that even when, when it was being presented, would the public be able to see that if they had any concerns about it? So that's the only reason I had asked, but if they're aware that they can go to a planning and zoning meeting.
And they should be able to see the drafts of those at those meetings.
Yes.
Or ask for one if they, if they don't have one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment? Can I comment on that CB stuff that you were talking about? I thought we'd put them in abeyance for a year already. Didn't we put that in abeyance?
We did. We're working on, through planning and zoning, and some type of an ordinance to address that, and it could take up to you to get that done. I'm just looking for some progress about that. Counselor Barabu?
That's, that clarifies that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item eight on the agenda, which is discussion items. Item 8.1 is the approve the appointment of Bob Kohn to the Cable Commission for a three-year term ending December 1, 2025.
A move to approve.
Move to approve by Counselor Paulson is their support. Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2, adopt a resolution to accept the donation for the Tennis For All Building. Moved by Counselor Friedleeb, supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.3, adopt a resolution accepting a donation for the Virginia Public Library. Moved by Counselor Biondich is their support. Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.4, adopt a resolution accepting a donation for the Shop With a Cop program. Moved by Counselor Friedleeb and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 8.5, adopt a resolution accepting a donation for the Virginia Fire Department. Moved by Counselor Biondich, looking for support by?
Support, Mayor.
Counselor Barabu, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.6, adopt a resolution accepting a donation for the Children's Memorial Park and Angel of Hope.
A move.
Moved by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.7, adopt a resolution accepting a donation for the Virginia Police Department to purchase a ballistic shield. Moved to approve by Counselor Friedleeb and supported by Counselor Barabu. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.8, appoint two counselors to the Elveth Virginia Airport Authority. Both terms expire at the end of this year. Counselor Johnson and myself are members of that board. Counselor Johnson serves as the chairperson and president of the Airport Authority right now, and I work as a part of the signing for the treasurer position, so I'm asking Counselor Johnson for some input.
I would volunteer to stay on, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson is volunteering to stay on the Airport Authority, and so looking for a motion to reappoint Counselor Johnson to the Airport Authority.
Also moved, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Barabu and supported by Counselor Friedleeb. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any volunteers to serve as the second elected representative to the Airport Authority? Anybody else want to volunteer to serve as a second for the Airport Authority? Okay. All right. Counselor Friedleeb has volunteered to serve a term in my place as in the Airport Authority, looking for a motion.
I will make that motion.
Motion to approve by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Barabu. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, both of Counselor Johnson and Counselor Friedleeb. Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, and the city of Virginia does still have a citizen opening for that, for the Airport Commission, and you learn a lot. I didn't know anything about airports, and now I run the meetings, which doesn't mean I know a whole lot, but we have some great support staff, and, and it really is interesting, the vitalness of that airport to our local economy. So I would encourage anybody who has any interest in the economy, airports, to apply for that commission. It is, it's very interesting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. We have, do we, do we vote on that? Yes, we did, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Item 8.9, adopt a resolution hiring recreation assistants.
A move.
Moved to approve by Counselor Paulson is their support? Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, item 8.10, adopt a resolution to make application to and accept funds from the IRRR for the residential demo grant program.
A move.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the Committee of the Whole meeting that was held on December 20, 2022, and we'll turn this portion of the city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Business. Britt?
At the Committee of the Whole meeting on December 20, 2022, Landon Richardson from MINDOT was present to discuss some intersection valuation alternatives that their, MINDOT is looking at, at Highway 53, at the intersection of Ninth Street North, and also Highway 53, at the intersection of Eighteenth Street North. If any changes they're looking to make would be done in 2024, the next step that they will have will bring forward the information to the public for their input. The study will end by April 2023, and a decision will be made then on how they're going to proceed with any renovations to those two intersections. Kathy Cody and Diane Terrell from the Friends of the Greenhouse were present to discuss their memorandum of understanding with the city. After much discussion, it was further discussed that we would continue to meet with them, discuss the MOU and the future of the greenhouse. It was moved and supported, ampun recommendation from the fire chief to increase the 2023 ambulance billing rates.
A move.
A move to approve the increase in the 2023 ambulance billing rates by motion by Counselor Johnson is their support? Support by Counselor Biondich? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Barabu?
Someplace I've been reading that if you increase the rates beyond a certain limitation, you can get a penalty from Medicare and some of these other places if you jack the way past the allowable yields that the insurance companies have had. Am I reading someplace wrong, or is this true?
That is for the intercept rate, and that did not change.
It did not change, okay. Then I stand corrected. I knew it was someplace with the ambulance.
I think you missed, you weren't at this Committee of the Whole meeting, but we did discuss that.
No, I was down at my medical appointment, so.
We did discuss that. That, that is not recommended to change because of those exact Medicare rules. We have to keep that at that rate.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. That has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for further clarification, this is mainly for private pay insurance, um, um, community members or regional members, so it doesn't affect any township rates or intercept rates like, like Britt was saying, nor does it impact anything with Medicare. So it's just the private pay, just to clarify.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Yes, that is correct. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to accept funds and enter into an agreement with Army Corps, US Army Corps of Engineers for this City of Virginia 2023-2025 street improvement project.
Also moved, Mayor.
Moved to approve by Counselor Barabu is their support? Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the federal participation and construction agreement with the state of Minnesota.
Also moved again, Mayor.
Thank you. Moved to approve by Counselor Barabu. Support? But Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the proposed contract with Glossimo, Patson, and Carney for criminal prosecutions for the city of Virginia.
A move.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Friedleeb. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Jim Rosfitt, Public Works Director, was present to discuss information regarding the purchase of a 2024 Vector truck from McQueen Equipment. Our current Vector truck is a 2002 model and is utilized quite a bit. Rosfitt feels that if we accept this, this quote at this moment, that we will get a better trade-in offer than was offered by McQueen. If we order it this year, the truck will not be in delivery, not be delivered until 2024. It was moved and supported to approve ordering the 2024 Vector truck for the sewer department at a cost of $585,835.16 with no trade-in, as we are going to sell it as surplus equipment, and for the funds to be secured in the 2023 equipment bond.
A move.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Barabu. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was noted that we did have the tennis court project placed out for RFPs, a request for proposals, twice, and we still have not received any responses. Thus, we are reaching out to contractors directly. We will still keep working on that and come back with the recommendation. It was moved and supported to approve the agreement with Essentia Health to use Iron Trail Motors Event Center as an alternate site for emergency evacuations.
Also moved, Mayor. Support.
Moved by Counselor Barabu and supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in the document in our packet, it's on page 84, I believe. It states that the city of Virginia agrees to make space available at the Miners Memorial Building. That would need to be changed. That could change in there, thank you.
Thank you for that observation. So we'll change that from the Miners Memorial Building to the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Thank you. With that correction, moved and supported with that correction, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the independent contractor agreement for the public access television with the inclusion of the recommended verbiage by the city attorney.
Moved to approve by Counselor Friedleeb. Is there support? Counselor Biondich? Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was there?
I just had one question.
I'm sorry. Let's hold back. I didn't see her light come on until the last minute there. I didn't see it at all, as a matter of fact. Further discussion before we vote? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm with our attorney what language was changed from the original Committee of the Whole that we included. I can't remember how you phrase that, but I just want to make sure that that was included in the new.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Paulson. So it has been moved and supported. Let's vote once again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
It was moved and supported to appoint Mayor Cuffey and Counselor Friedleeb to the committee to discuss a potential land sale for future development.
A move to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
After a closed session, we had, went into closed session to discuss potential development, I'm sorry, community development coordinator position wage discussion negotiations, and also the purchase of real estate in Virginia as per Minnesota statute 13D05. After we be convened, the motion was made to direct staff to continue with the wage negotiations with MAP for the community development coordinator position. I am happy to report that we have come back with a wage for the council, and today, now if the council agrees, we can approve the job description with the wage.
Okay, thank you. If we have a chance to review that, which I have, we'll go around the room for comments, questions, and concerns, or potential motions. First, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor, I feel comfortable as written, so I would feel comfortable moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the recommended job description with the wage range for the community planning position, director's position, is there support? Supported by Counselor Freedley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was also moved and supported to approve the purchase agreement for real estate property described as a southerly six feet of Lot 1, Block 1, Guderson's First Edition to Virginia, which is located adjacent to 629 13th Street South, which is necessary for the 13th Street South reconstruction project.
Which begins in 2023.
Begins in 2023.
Thank you.
Also moved, Mayor.
Moved to approve by Counselor Baraboo, is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Johnson, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I'm sorry, further discussion?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Counselor Johnson.
Do we need to approve posting the coordinator position?
You approve the job description, then I can post the.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Johnson, okay. Britt?
Thank you, and then one final item, Mayor Cuffee did point out that the border review needed new council members on it for spring. Any city council member that's interested in being trained for the border review can contact City Clerk Pam Levine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No further items. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item 10, commission liaison reports, or is there any city council that has a commission liaison report they'd like to present to the council this evening? Counselor Baraboo.
I'm not going to present one at this point, Mayor, because the Liaison for Public Utilities meeting is Wednesday this week at 3:30. I'm no longer going to be liaison at this point, and I won't be able to give the report, so we need to get somebody appointed as liaison to Public Utilities tonight, if you possibly can, because I won't be here in January to give the report.
Well, we're going to do that at the reorganizational meeting, however, the alternate to you can attend that meeting.
I think, is that you, Gary? Who's, I don't know who the alternate is, are you, Maya? Okay, so it's at Wednesday tomorrow at 3:30 in the afternoon, on the 28th.
And if you are unable to attend due to commitments, I'll certainly appear in your place until we make the appointments. Thank you.
Is that the Public Utility Building in your conference room right off where you're going to pay the bills?
Yeah, yeah, and if there's a conflict anyway, please let me know, and I'll be more than happy to attend that meeting. Okay. Any other commission, any other commission liaison reports? None, we'll move to item 11, department head reports. Britt, do you have anything else to add under department head reports?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brian, our city attorney, any legal advice or information you want to disseminate this evening?
No, no formal report, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. Pam, anything from you?
No.
Sheri, our Finance Human Resources Director, anything that you'd like to add?
Just working on getting all the budget that was passed into the state, so.
Looking forward to that. All right, thank you. All right, move to item 12, council reports. Does a council, any council have a report they'd like to give this evening? We'll first go right to left, Counselor Biondich.
Thank you, and it's not really a report, but I had many people tell me how happy they are with our plowing crew after the weekend that we had, that they were out and being very diligent about keeping the roads open, so thank you to our crews that are out plowing on weekends and holidays and horrible weather.
And for all of those who are listening at home and have called me and other counselors about some, the difficulty in removing the stove, we just ask for your patience in that regard, because our crews are, as Counselor Biondich says, working very diligently to try to get things accomplished, so thank you. Okay, any other reports? Okay, I just have one report, actually it's not a report, just as everybody probably already knows, particularly elected body and all our staff, we had a little gathering for Counselor Baraboo this evening, a little farewell hors d'oeuvre and, and thanks for your service type of little gathering, and some people showed up for that, and we appreciate that, and thanking Counselor Baraboo for all his 27 years of service to the City of Virginia as a city council and working in a variety of capacities during your tenure here, Charlie. And so before I'll just, if anybody wants to say anything, welcome to do so, and then we have a little very short presentation and, and, you know, from our, from us, how heartfelt we are about your service to this organization, to the City of Virginia, so. Counselor Johnson.
Charlie, I went to high school with your son, and I just want to thank you for your knowledge and the guidance over the last six years I've been sitting across from you. Your, your, your knowledge is invaluable, your mentorship is unbelievable, and I appreciate it, and I just wish you the best as you move on and hope to see you around helping out. Still, we, we still need your history and your knowledge, especially of cities, streets, alleys, and so on and so forth, so thank you very much, Charlie, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve, for those nice comments, just one word, I've already talked to Matt Reed a little bit about the streets and alleys, and he's going to keep me informed, and I'm going to sit as a bystander, as a citizen, at some of those meetings, so if you need expertise, I'll be able to help you.
Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Baraboo, where do I begin? You were a family pharmacist when we first moved back here 17 years ago, when I had all these little kids that were always getting sick, and you'd say, "I'll give you another amoxicillin prescription if you go talk to your doctor for all the rest of them," so I remember that, and I just remember you taking such good care of my family, and I also remember you telling me, if I wanted to really be a part of this community when we moved back here, to get involved, and you were the one that inspired me to get involved with VITA when I had all those kids and couldn't really serve in much capacity, and so I joined VITA 16 years ago because you, you told me if I want to really get involved in this community, to get involved in helping out in those processes, so I want to thank you so much for being my mentor and my pharmacist over the years, and for being one of the most amazing friends while I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julianne. Her kids were a wonderful joy as I was a pharmacist, I have to tell you, I have to tell you that. Her daughters now, especially one of her daughters, is still a particular friend that contacts me and sends things to me, and we have to wish her all the best luck, because she got hurt here a while back, and she's doing just fine, but Julianne has learned so much over the time that I've been on this council, whether, in fact, all the counselors that I've worked with that had not been here for as long as I have, you've all learned, you all know what to do, and I hope you continue with your good choices as counselors with the City of Virginia. Thank you, Julianne.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Freedley.
I just want to congratulate you, Charlie, on your impressive run of being reelected for 27 years on a city council, I can't even imagine that, but the electorate in this town understands value when they have it, and very valuable to this entire community as well as this council, and in particular as a mentor to me.
Gary, thank you very much. I started this whole run, and it wasn't 27 years consecutive, I got bumped out one time, and here for 40 years, but it was pretty close to that. I started out with a vindictive nature about how the heck our streets were doing in this town, that's how I started in 1990, and we put together programs from 1990 to 2007 worth over $50 million into this community. People may not believe that, but you have Second Avenue done, you had Ninth Street done, you had Eighth Street done, I can go on and on and name all these big streets that we did to get them back, and the stuff we made sure, but Highway 53 ended up where it did, so it didn't bypass Virginia, and that was a huge committee that we took across the Iron Range, my wife and I started that, and we had probably 30 people in our committee, Mayor will remember that, he was part of that committee, we met downtown where the Sugar Shack is now, and we put that all together, and we would not let the state of Minnesota, they wanted to go down Highway 37 with five railroad tracks in the way for ambulance and stuff, we got rid of every ambulance stoppage on the way. So that was one of my fames to claim, and I'm so proud of that, I have to tell you that, but that's where it all started, with me being angry about what the streets were like in Virginia. So thank you, everybody, I appreciate it, and the citizen of Virginia for letting us do all the work that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich.
Thank you, and I would also like to thank you for all your years of service for the city, your commitment to staying on everything that was going on, and I've learned a lot from you in the four short years I've been here, but I certainly hope that I can reach out, because you have all the history of what was done and why it was done, which is invaluable to me, so thank you for all you've done.
I want to let all of you know, and Maya especially, my card that I've given out over the years to everybody, has my home phone number on it, and it also has my cell number on it. Those numbers are not going to change, so any of you on the council, you're welcome, I'm an open book, you're welcome to call me anytime, anyplace, and if I can't answer you, I will call you back. So please, don't hesitate to call me, I've got a ton of years of experience that I'll be glad to share with people, that goes for the citizens of this community also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. There's a movie called The Outlaw Josie Wales, and in that movie, Chief Dan George, who met Clint Eastwood in the force of the reservations, and he was traveling through, and he told, Chief Dan George told Clint Eastwood that he met with the President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln, and Abraham Lincoln's Secretary of the Interior, and he told Chief Dan George this one quote, "You must endeavor to persevere." And Charlie, over the years, you have done that, you have endeavored to persevere. So we, as a council, as a staff, in appreciation for all your contributions over the 27 years, Britt was, uh, ordered this token of our appreciation, and so I want to present to you today with a letter, and so I'd like to stand up here and read this to you. I'm going to come right over here. So everybody can hear. So everybody can see. Charlie?
Here.
Good friend.
You are my friend also.
Always. So, I want to thank Britt for doing this for us, ordering this very special gift, we thought it's appropriate for you, and I'm going to wait to present it to you from home because we have a letter that I'd like to read, and it's from all of us, from all our hearts, and this is what we want to say to you. It's a one-page letter, unfortunately, could be longer.
That's, that's small compared to what the mayor does.
Well, distinguished counselor, Charles Baraboo. Counselor Baraboo, on behalf of the elected members of this city government, the city staff, and the citizens of the City of Virginia, we honor you for 27 years of faithful and dedicated service as a city councilor. The desire to serve, the dedication to the issues, the discipline to remain focused, and the determination to help make this city a better place to live and work are the qualities that made you a strong community leader. You served on several committees and liaisons to various organizations throughout your tenure, most recently as the vice mayor, chairperson of the Street and Alley Committee, and as a liaison to the Public Utilities Commission. You always spoke your mind, passionately stated your case, drew from your years of experience, and made decisions based on research, preparation, and knowledge. You have served us well. We are grateful to you for your sacrifice and your service for the common good. Now more could be said about you, but we do not have an unlimited amount of paper to list all your accomplishments, so we are here today to say thank you for all you have done. A new chapter of your service begins, your service will never end. We are confident that you will once again be successful in whatever future endeavors you choose to pursue. Sincerely and respectfully, good luck, and we'll miss you, your friends and colleagues, your citizen of Virginia, and your whole fire family. Charlie, congratulations. We wish you well. Okay. What time is it?
It is quarter after 6:00.
Quarter after 6:00, you have a few more minutes before your tenure is over, at least as a city councilor, but on behalf of us, and I thank Britt once again, we have an inscription on this clock that you could please draw probably on your mantle, so act for everybody to see, and I hope that you do that, it says, Charlie Baraboo, City Councilor, in sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership you've provided to the City of Virginia for 27 years. Congratulations, Charlie, we wish you well. There you go.
I'm going to have to say a couple words here to my fellow counselors as well, yeah, put that on my desk, Larry, would you? I've enjoyed my time in tenure for 27 years on this city council, I just want to give a couple pieces of advice for all of you that are going to continue on as counselors, make sure you do your due diligence, read your packets, do your research, look at things, question, question the wonderful staff that you have here. If you have questions, please, do not hesitate, you have a wonderful finance director, city clerk that keeps me on my toes all the time, mayor, our legal attorney, Britt, and every other department head that I can not name quite at this point in time, use them, use them to your ability, just do not hesitate. Citizens of Virginia can be very helpful, we've put together a lot of committees over the years and stuff. One of my important committees that you're going to continue with is Rams, the Range Association Municipalities and Schools, that is a seven-county venue that we need to continue as a city of Virginia. Just please, do not hesitate to use your knowledge, your interpretation of things that go on, and look things up, don't be afraid to do that. I want to thank everybody here sincerely for what you've done for me as an individual person, and I want to thank the citizens of Virginia. I've enjoyed my time here tremendously, but it's time for me to move on. It is hard. My wife said to me, "I may not like you without the house butch anymore," because she retired a little bit before I did, "If I don't like you, I'm going to kick you in the pants and kick you out to have coffee with somebody here at City Hall." So, thank you so much. This brings, right here, I'm serious, right here. So thank you so much. This brings, right here. I'm serious. Right here. Thank you. This is going to go, this clock is absolutely going on my mantle. I have a perfect place for it, but I don't have something as beautiful as this to put, so it's going there. Thank you so much. Bye-bye, everybody. I'll be around. I'm not going to totally disappear. I will be around to watch some meetings and see some things. I may ask Pam to keep sending me agendas, not the full packets, but at least the agenda. Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
And dare we say, we will likely see you at that podium some future time as well. Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss before we move on to our adjournment? Council Barneselli.
I'll have to stand one more time and wish him good luck and thank him.
Let's all stand in one big round of applause for Council Baraboo. I'd like to see in the barber shop, Charlie, next. Your next endeavor. Okay. That's right.
Got to grow some more, Larry, again.
Yeah, you'll be in good shape there, buddy. Okay. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring about before we adjourn this evening? Well, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. Try to stay warm. We have another storm coming down the Pike, a little warmer weather, but please stay safe. Have any questions or comments? You certainly can notify anybody of us, so please call us if you have any problems or issues. We'll try to take care of them for you. Please have patience as we move the snow and clean the streets on your behalf. We stand adjourned until Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in this council chambers. Thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned. Good night. Happy New Year.